We will call the meeting to order at 5:30. The hearing session, this is the portion of our meeting designated for comments from the public about matters related to the closed session agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes with a maximum of 20 minutes allocated for a particular item or topic. To address the governing board, to submit to the clerk of the board, a completed speaker card prior to the start of the closed session portion of the meeting. Mr. Favela, do we have cards pertaining to the closed session?
I don't see the, I don't see any for closed session, right?
Oh, I was told they were all closed session.
Point one, let me see. That's item three, open session policy, session, session, open session, open sessions.
Sorry, I'm so sorry, Mr. Revai.
That's okay.
I don't see any for the closed sessions.
Okay.
All right, then we will adjourn to.
Do you mind for close? Do I put it to you?
Oh, we got a switch where we gave you the wrong pile.
Oh, that's why. We were looking and looking and everything said open.
Okay.
Here we go.
Okay. Let me see, estamos.
Thank you, board members and community staff. This, this really could be an either open or, or closed meeting, but I just wanted to share this before you go into your closed session. Because I think it's important for all of us to understand that the majority of the board is really just beginning to learn. How to govern. You don't have a lot of experience and, and it's a learning process. And you're really not only learning just how to govern, but you're also learning about the community that you serve. You also have an interim superintendent who is new to, to this position. But you have two seasoned fellow board members who can serve as great resources. And I'm sure they are more than willing to help so that these meetings are fair and consistent and effective for the sake of all. You are, after all, is said and done, one governing body. Yes, you were elected by your neighbors, but you don't serve them. You serve nearly 5,000 children in this district. You took an oath to discharge your duty to those students, not the people who elected you. One of the FU ESD election districts probably has 50% of the population of our students living within its boundaries. Does that mean that that trustee has 50% of the voting power? No. Another one of you only has about 15% of the student population. Does that mean that you only have 15% of the voting power? Again, no. You each have equal responsibility to serve all of the students and all of the staff in Fallbrook Union Elementary School District. The new ones, you have six months as board members, nearly 15% of your term is already behind you. We need you to be as effective as a governing body as you can possibly be and work together to be your best. I'm not so naive as to think that you would all check your politics and your personal ideologies at the door of the boardroom. But we can all be hopeful, and I am hopeful enough to believe that you can work as one body. That you will discharge your duty to Fallbrook to ensure that all of your decisions will be based on what will result in the best possible outcomes for all of our students. Be that whether you're evaluating the superintendent, evaluating processes for how to get the work done. How to look at curriculum, how to look at how this community is going to be governed by you in terms of our education. So I just want you to know that we are all hopeful and we're all pulling for you to do the best job that you possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Paul. Kilman.
I don't really have anything to say.
You're welcome to pass.
I am Paul Coleman. I didn't have anything to say at this time. About the interim superintendent. And. I had signed up for it because Tara Jenkins had wanted to speak on it, but she is not here, so. So, thank you.
And last, we have Tara Jenkins. Doesn't look like she's present.
We're done. All right, then we will adjourn to closed session at 5:37. All right, so we will return from closed session and reconvene into open session at 6:40. In the public report, public report of action taken in closed section, there was no action taken, so we will move to our flat salute. I will lead it again.
That's fantastic. That's perfect.
So we have notes. All right, if you'll please place your left hand over your, sorry, your right hand over your heart as I'm doing it. Ready to begin. So we are now to the hearing session. This is the portion of our meeting designated for comments from the public about matters. Not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Should individuals wish to comment on items on the present agenda, they may do so during this portion of the meeting or at the time the item is considered by the board. Comments are limited to three minutes with a maximum of 20 minutes allocated for a particular item or topic. While the Brown Act allows the board to hear issues within its jurisdiction from the public that are not on the agenda, it only allows the board to respond in a very limited manner such as providing direction to staff. If the board were to have more than this type of brief discussion on an item not on the agenda, it could be a violation of the Brown Act's rules for posting the agenda. To address the governing board, please submit to the clerk of the board a completed speaker card prior to the start of the open section portion of the meeting. Have cards, I believe.
Sure, we do. For item 3.1. We can start with Luis Sehino.
Open public comment or on the agenda items?
Agenda item 3.1.
How many, how much time do I have this time? Three minutes, all right.
Yeah, you got three minutes.
All right, three minutes. I'll make it short. Hello, board members. Good evening. My name is Luis Sehino. Again, I'm one of the parents here at, for this district. I have a son in second grade, soon to be a third grader at May Ellis. And I'm here to speak as a community member, as an educator, as a longtime resident of Fallbrook, of the needs of this community when it comes to the superintendent. I hope that you make the correct decision to hire somebody who is credentialed, who is bilingual, who has an understanding of what we need for this community, who is a diverse, who understands this diversity within this community and what we need. We have great schools, great programs, and so we need somebody that is willing to come in and be part of that culture, part of that community. And so we don't need somebody that doesn't have an experience, that doesn't have the credentials. I myself am a PhD candidate in the Department of Sociology at UCR. And I know what it takes to be a PhD candidate. I know what it takes to, you know, get to that level and understand the dynamics of education. And so anybody in all of you who are in these, in these chairs, in these seats, understand how important education is. And so when you are making that decision, I urge you not to make a decision based on your political interests or political districts, but make it on the interest of the children and all of the children within this district. And so considering everything and all the needs of our community. And so that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Jefferies.
Good evening. I'm back to encourage you in the work you're doing. Let me begin by saying I was able to go to May Ellis to the Leadership Day. Out to San Onofre and to Mary Fay Pendleton to meet with the sixth and eighth grade STEM teachers who are involved in the Department of Defense CMO project that I evaluate for you. This is a district with such strengths and such a bright future. I, like you, am an elected official. I am on the health board for Fallbrook Regional Health District. My first meeting, I learned our CEO was leaving. And three new board members and two continuing board members selected the new CEO. This is such a high stakes endeavor that you're involved in. It's one you've never done before. I'm sure you have never hired a superintendent. So I'm here to encourage you to stay the path that you have set with leadership associates. They will be good guides. They are very wise. I want to also. Talk about the legacy aspect of this work that you're doing right now. Ms. Lund Dean and Mr. Fabula. Their legacy is embodied in those two brand new schools on Camp Pendleton that cost the taxpayers of our region zero. It's manifested there in a building. We probably won't be building any more schools while you're on the school board, the three new board members. But your legacy will be embedded in every decision you make in, in consultation with the new superintendent. There is technical work being a superintendent. There is adaptive work. Technical is, we know what to do. Let's do it right, insisting upon excellence. Adaptive is, new information, we have to know, know new ways to deal with this. You need a nimble, flexible, and yet very brave person to do this job. It takes an energetic mind, a kind and brave heart, and a genuine care for all children and those who teach and run the schools. Bold enough to make tough decisions and skilled enough to deliver bad news when it's needed and still maintain relationships. If that was all this job was, you would need a very skilled and knowledgeable person, but it's so much more. So I'm here to encourage you. It's a very exciting time for the district. It's exciting for you too. And remember, the decision you make will carry into the future. And I know you want your footprints on the sand to be great for all kids. So let's pull together, let's bring together. Leadership associates will lead you to some great candidates, and I know you will be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tara Jenkins.
Excuse me, it's been a long day. Good evening. I stumbled across this interview of our wonderful interim superintendent in the Village News. I was encouraged to hear Ms. Martin say a few things. But before I do, let me start by saying, I know, I know in no way do I want to jump to wrong conclusions about Ms. Martin's comments. I know she is a big believer in higher education being an asset. That being said, she also readily acknowledges that being a recent educator like Ms. McGray on the field is also a great asset. And that a superintendent at a good district such as Fallbrook has an excellent support team to help run the school. Here are some of the things that were written. The interim superintendent said McGray's experience as a middle school teacher is a valuable asset and adds to the effectiveness of district leadership. She acknowledges she started off as a director before being promoted to assistant superintendent and business services. So not necessarily the way you go about getting a superintendent. Granted, she's intern, but wonderful. And she also acknowledges I've never been a teacher or a principal, but I know what they need, she said. When they ask for something, I look at the request closely and find a way to make that happen. The district is running well, she said. Dr. Singh had a good structure in place and there's nothing really new. The cabinet runs effectively as a team. There's a great leadership team. It's not my leadership. I know what I am, I don't know. I know what I don't know. And I rely on experts on the cabinet to contribute to their areas of expertise. Together, we can do a lot of great things. The consultants are working, let's see here. Okay. So my question to you guys, as you're looking for a superintendent, is why can Ms. Martin be an exception to some rules, but not Mr. Christopher Clements? I share this because it makes me feel confident that no matter whom you hire, they will have an excellent team of experts to help them continue to do the current job of running the business and administrative side of the school. I also wanted to take this moment to remind you, the board, of a list of successful people who run large organizations in their fields of expertise such as Mark Zuckerberg, Bill Gates, Steve Jobs, Oprah Winfrey, Rachel Ray, and the list of a variety of professions truly could go on and on forever if you were to search it. Mr. Clements is also an expert in his field of education, especially with at-risk students, as you heard. Unfortunately, those students speak. Unfortunately, with 50 to 80% or 70% of our students not meeting state benchmarks in language arts or math, we have a large at-risk population of students. I believe Mr. Clements is such a man suited for a time of need in our district's student achievement as this. Many in our community are hoping and asking for, all we are asking for is an interview. That's it. 45 minutes of your time to allow him to prove himself the best fit or not the best fit.
I think.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Kilman.
We, we're not, we're not, we'll be minutes. So who is our next speaker, Mr. Favela?
J Nice.
Hi, my name is JJ Nice. I want to thank you guys for being here to serve. I know it's a thankless job and there's a lot that goes into it that we have no idea about. But I also would love to encourage you to, as you're, as you're seeking out those that you are going to interview. We do have some concerns in the community that there's a lot of things that are being thrown at kids these days and propaganda that's going out in the curriculum and a lot of parental rights are being stripped. And so we really are hoping that you guys will choose someone who gives the parents a voice and a chance to interact with the administration and teachers. And discuss the curriculum. It's been really sad to see a lot of schools in our amazing state really fall down the trajectory of poor student achievement and a lot of social emotional issues because of what's happening on the school campuses and the district is in a position right now to select someone to lead them. And we're just hoping that you guys have a plethora, not just one side politically or the other, but of qualified candidates who have not just looking good on paper, but actually having the heart for children and for their families and for their growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Letizia Maldonado Stamos.
Hello again, Letizia Maldonado Stamos. And I would like to just make a couple of comments about the superintendent search. I want to ditto what has been said by my fellow community members here in terms of the importance of following the process. You've heard that at the previous meeting and tonight. And, and the fact that if we have faith in the process, then we know that the best candidates are going to be interviewed. It's when we sidestep the process that we get into trouble. I want to just talk for a moment about the, about the community panel that was discussed. And hopefully you all are going to, to bring that up. And I think that there's no doubt that a pre-interview by a panel of community stakeholders of the finalists will only result in a thorough evaluation of the qualifications of those candidates that you are going to be reviewing. We don't see this as a hiring committee. That is 100% your purview. But as I mentioned earlier, three of you are new to this community. And a community panel will only serve you well. And the more diverse and representative of the clients and the community, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for item 3.1. There are comments for 3.2, but.
Okay. So we're going to move to action item, the superintendent search, community interview panel, the recommend.
I had the speaker card.
For 3.1?
Well, I don't know what that is, just the speed of the super.
What's your name? I'm not for that item. Check for non-agenda item, which was the beginning of the meeting.
Close session was at 5:30. I mean, I don't know what the.
That was about the closed session, so. Yeah, so it would be appropriate to have, I think, have her speak at this point because it doesn't have to. Yeah, we haven't gotten into item number one.
Okay.
Oh, neat. Thank you. I'm still Kathy Lambert. And I'm one of the concerned involved parents in our school district. First of all, I want to offer kudos for this board because they repeatedly provided links to the job application as well as the selection process, and they were available, readily available for anyone who's interested. And I thought that was a great display of transparency. So thank you for that. I've been criticized that I don't have any skin in the game because I'm an elder, obviously. But I most certainly do. My three kids all went through Fallbrook Schools. I also have five grandchildren. And I hope that the people in their school districts are helping them to become bright and capable adults. I taught in this district for many years and had a bookstore downtown. I firmly believe that children are our future. They will be the future teachers, doctors, truck drivers, movers, shakers, farm workers, voters. And we need to make sure that they learn as much as they can about the world, past, present, and future, because they're going to have a lot to deal with. I'm standing up for challenged books at the high school, and I have also been observing the process here at FU ESD for finding a new superintendent, and I'd like to express some concerns. It has been rumored that a majority of the board has been trying to subvert the process of finding a qualified superintendent. This must not be allowed. Everyone involved must resist taking shortcuts. Full transparency is vital because there are so many diverse stakeholders. Not all of them have access to meetings or the internet or even the same language. All of which is necessary for an honest and genuine outcome. The community pre-interview panel is a sound idea. Sharing information, providing participation, and genuine transparency. I don't know if anyone has yet written a banner, but my banner would be, follow the process, please. And in regard to parental, my parental rights, I have read a whole lot about ACLU and ALA and so on. Parental rights involve the parent's rights over their child. Not their schoolmates, not their friends, it only their child. So people who talk about parental rights and they want to get going and change this and move that and ban this and, and so on. It's not right. That's a wrong definition. I don't know where they get it. But parental rights is for the parent over their child, period. I rest my case. Okay.
That should be it for. Sorry about that.
All right, so we will move to the action. Superintendent Search Community Interview Panel Recommendation. It is recommended the governing board discuss options and then determine the members representatives of a community interview panel for the superintendent search. So do I have a motion? I motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have questions, discussion?
True, I would again like to propose. What was discussed at our last meeting. The idea of a panel that has seats for our school stakeholders. Our employees that are going to work with this superintendent. And who represent the various aspects, programs in, of our district. So that would include a seat for a principal, a seat for a feder rep, a seat for a CSEA rep, a seat for a D-LAC rep, a seat for migrant ed, a seat for the parent teacher organizations, a seat for special education rep, a seat for extended learning program. And I would add a seat for our, our management team, management cabinet team. And along with that, five, a community member nominated by each board member. The manner, the process for those groups deciding who that person would be, would, would be up to those groups. We will not decide, we, as board members, we would only select our community members. The stakeholders would select, nominate, you know, pull from a hat or whatever process they wanted, that they choose to use. They would select who that person would be, keeping in mind that our interviews will be on May 20th, starting at 7:30 in the morning. And will last until probably 5:00 PM. So we would have to find someone that's available. And then select from there. So that would be the process. That's the proposal that I'm making for this community panel. And with the clear understanding that the, this panel is only offering, I believe, strengths and how did Richard put it, they're not selecting the superintendent. They are evaluating the candidates. Giving some feedback, strengths and challenges solely. All right, it's that they're, the decision-making lies on, on the board, but this community panel will offer some feedback.
I was trying to write notes adding, did you say a cabinet member and a member of the management team or a cabinet member slash management team?
Slash.
Yeah. Slash management.
So that would put us at 14 people on this panel, which is quite a lot of people to be on a panel, but I think we have a good core representation of our district. With this.
So 14 people on the panel besides the five of us.
Right.
So 19 people.
No, we're not a panel.
No.
We're our own separate group that meets with the candidates individually. It'll be the five of us.
Separate from the.
Oh, absolutely separate because it's the board that interviews and hires. But we will get feedback that will be provided at the end of the day regarding the panel's findings on various candidates.
And according to what Richard said, essentially the candidates would interview twice. Once with us, once with the panel, that we, then we'll switch. And just to, just to be correct, I guess, even before that, we would select the candidates, right?
Oh, yes.
We would select the candidates.
Yes.
Or selects the candidates.
Yes.
This interview panel, interviews would all happen the same day.
Right.
So this community panel would not be involved in selecting the candidates, only interviewing on the day of.
Okay, and then if, so if we go with that, getting panels, I might propose a, would again be that we bring in shareholders and it would be each or whoever, whoever shareholders or stockholders, but each of us, each district. Each board member gets to choose two.
May I ask clarification? So Ms. McBride, would you only have a panel of 10, only including two individuals appointed by each board member, or would you also have internal stakeholders like principals, cabinet members? two individuals appointed by each board member, or would you also have internal stakeholders like principals, cabinet members, union reps?
Well, well, that's why I say it can be stakeholders, shareholders, so it's up to each individual member if they want to bring a principal or they want to bring a community member. It's it's up to each individual member.
Because I just wanted to clarify what you were proposing.
Yeah.
So that's proposal two is no. No. Internal stakeholders by virtue of involving them in the process unless a board member appoints someone who is an internal candidate, is that an internal employee?
That's open to that, right, because you're choosing whoever you want, but we each get two, that's total of ten.
I would say. I think it's important that board members have an appointee. But I also think that there are two stakeholder groups. There are external stakeholders, which are very important, but there are also internal stakeholders. And in fact, the internal stakeholders have both the experience of working with at least one or in some cases two superintendents and they're part of the district in levels of high levels of responsibility. And also parents. So I I would absolutely want to have seats that are automatically set aside for people inside the district that are really important, and I think that means the head of the classified. Union, the credentialed union, that's the teachers. We have Dr. Mrs. Perez, Lily Perez. She runs the new after school and before school and summer camp program, which is a multimillion, I think it's like four or five million dollar program, but it's huge. And it's a big step for us in terms of getting before and after school care plus school break and and in summertime. So I think that's why you suggested the extended learning program. I'd absolutely want to have a principal involved.
Like that's, that's why you each have a choice. You can bring us, you know, two principals if you wanted, we each get two choices. He could bring two principals if he wanted, or two other people in in the. Any of us could bring in principals if we wanted, that's why there's, but everybody gets an even. An amount of.
It wouldn't actually work because with the the categories that Mr. Vavala recommended, those are nine internal candidates.
Why I I'm giving my proposal, that's his proposal.
Right, right. Oh, I understand. I understand. I'm just saying that it would, it it would not work to have to say, okay, everybody takes two. And Mrs. Saval, if you want to have a principal, then you need to use your your appointment for a principal. We won't have enough, there aren't enough, say it better for me.
Let me, let me make, let me try to clarify this a little bit. I agree with both of the proposals in their own unique way. What I would like to see is just like you said, Ms. Lundin, that is a standard group of participants from the principals to the FETA to the C CSEA, what have you. Those would be seats. If each one of us then brings in any person of our choice, that would round out the panel to me. That way we can pick whomever we like. If you want to pick your next door neighbor, you want to pick the dog catcher, if you want to pick your mom, whoever it is, you have that that is your choice, but those people would be the other part of the the stakeholders. That way they're represented, all of those groups are represented, we make the choice of who we would like to see represented from our perspective as well. And that would probably bring our numbers up to what nineteen by Michael fourteen. Is on those and right, well, one from each of us, and then that would be nineteen. And I think that would be a very fair representation of every group that's involved in it. Mr. left out one because I think his list was very inclusive. We could probably book it up by perhaps one group, but I think his group was very inclusive.
I mean, then, so you're saying one from all these people that work at the school, one. From every, okay, so it's one person, not.
No, 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 right, so.
One person and then buy one each of us.
Five.
One for a community.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then.
Put us at fourteen, fourteen member panel, which is.
Okay. So then, so then I'm going to revise my proposal and say that then three to each of us. It'd be eighteen, but then it'd be an even number to have everybody pick three, since the problem is Mrs. Lundin pointed out is that there's not enough with ten to get the extra principal, the extra, what is it, C S C A person, the D LAC. Yeah, people from.
We would have, we would have, Mr. Favela's list would be the inclusive list of the groups that we had stated that we would like to see participate. So if we're having a C S E can, they're going to pick their person. Whoever in C S A they would like to have be the representative, that's who they will choose. So his list will be those listed people, then each of us will pick whomever we choose. So again, if you want to pick your next.
Well, actually, he's picking all the main people and then each of us.
Anybody.
He's not seeing anybody.
You don't have any say in who that principle will be.
No, that his proposal would be just picking what his suggestion is, is a group of of staff and.
Well, that was the list to remember, we had all gone, everybody had put in some particular group that they would like to see represented.
Right, well, I'm trying to, I didn't finish, yeah, sure. So these, all these groups of that are groups instead of individuals, so.
So I, because the groups will pick their own individual.
Right, and I don't think we should be all deciding which principal, which Peter rep, I can see that just being a headache.
Right, they pick, they pick their own. We just, we had discussed the groups that we would be. We would want on the panel, so they will pick their own person from that group. And then we would all have our individual say of who we wanted apart from those. Now, if you happen to pick someone from C S A, by all means. But then that would be two people from C S C A, but they will have their their person as well.
Right, yeah, so the only person we would pick would be one community member, the rest of the groups decide on their own, which.
Only one community member.
Yeah, we each, so that would, that would put us at fourteen member panel, which is quite a a big panel already, but I think these are, again, key stakeholders that are going to work with this new superintendent and you know, and I I think it balances balances out this board because we have a very new board. You know, we're still getting to know the principals, the teachers, we're still getting to know this district here. So this will help bring in that experience that the district has in such an important decision.
You've been here two years, is that right?
I've been on board here, I've sworn in.
No, no, on this board, because you said the key spring being brought up that very new members, but you're included, right?
Years.
Two years and and Ms. Lundin, you've been on the board also.
Two and a half, I think we've both been on two and a half years and are newly elected.
So we're all.
That's what I'm saying, we have a very new board, even us, I mean. Yeah, so we need that insight from folks that work here, that are going to see this person every day.
I think so, we're saying eight stakeholders and how many shareholders?
Nine, nine, two, two parents, one from D LAC. And one from the P T S A, so D LAC is for our Latinx parents and the other is the overall P T S A, so two parents. We've got two parents. Then we have two union members. One from each of the two unions. Right, then we have a principal, so that's one site administrator, that's what that's called, is a site administrator. And then we have a member of the management team or cabinet, but cabinet right now would be your chief financial officer, your H R and your instructional curriculum, so that's Dr. Husing and and Mr. Morris and part of Cindy. She's, she's kind of, she's traveling, but the management team is larger, it has directors of of various departments, department heads. So that's a management, so you'd have one from management. And then there would be one, two, three from various major programs. One is the summer school, after school, before school program, that's the extended learning program, that's that four, five million dollar program. And then special education, we have, I don't know what the percentage is, but we have a very large percentage of students with I U Ps and special education needs. And then migrant ed, I think our district serves the largest number of migrant students of any other district in the county. So we have a very significant and structured migrant ed program. So there would be four program representatives for the major program representatives, so that gets us to two for, I've got too many. One, two union, that's four.
Ms. Lundin, the military, please, military representative.
I don't think so. You know, we've got our Pendleton schools, but there's, you know, I I think we can cover that if, depending on where the principal comes from. So we're looking at, as I, as I'm seeing it, fourteen, so five from us, we're looking at the external community. Right, because that's what we're focused on, are the whoever we believe in the community of Fallbrook would be a real asset to this process. And then we would have the nine, the nine that would be from inside the organization, including two parents, so it's seven inside, two parents, and then five community.
Could we not have a couple more parents on there?
We could, but it gets a panel gets really, really big if you.
That's why you would have the opportunity to pick your person.
We cover you want here, wherever you want to. We could take a parent.
Are we going to have perimeters on who we pick to?
Not the same way, those groups will pick their person.
You will pick your person. But in, and say, I think you need to have some parameters. For example, you don't want the spouse of an applicant being somebody that's recommended. I know that should go without saying, but I'll say it. Or any other conflict of interest that could be just because trying to keep the process above reproach here, so.
And I think would be good to try to find folks that represent different, you know, sectors of the community or organizations. The community here.
No, I'm sorry. So that's what I would propose, and it gives each of us as board members complete flexibility, with the exception of no spouses of applicants. Actually, it shouldn't be anybody that's related because that's a, that would be a conflict of interest, no matter how it's related, that's why I had to reduce myself on Monday.
Exactly.
And and I think it would be a strong panel, you know, it has lots of experience and lots of exposure and people are coming from different perspectives. So I think the people we appoint from the community are coming from a different perspective than say a staff person might.
Well, I'm going to bring up one more point, that since Diana brought that up and when she said, what about two more parents and what it was, what the response was, that's getting too big, but it's only two. If we went from ten wasn't enough, fourteen is a better number. What, just two more is too big, and that just doesn't make sense to me. I think she had a good point, so two more, how does that suddenly become a huge number?
It doesn't have to be, I think. I think they could work with sixteen, if I think if it gets bigger than sixteen, I mean, just.
Right, but she, she only, right, but she only suggested, right, two more parents, not not bigger than that.
Support that.
How would we decide?
Two, two D LAC, two from D LAC and two from P T S A. Yeah, you know.
There you go.
That'd be.
Yeah, that sounds really good.
I, is that what you meant, Diane?
Yeah, 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 so each each group, each parent organization provides two.
And they decide on their own.
And they decide on their own, and it would be our inner and soup who appoints the cabinet member or someone from the management team. Likewise, Mrs. Martin would select the principal. The two unions would, the bargaining units would select their own. And the parent groups would select their own, so it becomes a very straightforward process now. What it does mean because of the timeline is it would be incumbent upon us as board members to quickly come up with our appointees, letting them know, you know, it's seven thirty A M. to five P M. and it's all day and what's involved and what the expectations are, they would be meeting, I think. Mr. Tom.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt for.
Of course.
Continue because I can't, I thought maybe you meant the two parents, meaning two people from the community.
Parents do come from the community.
Right, right. But not necessarily from a group that you already, the part of this group thing that.
Well, the, the, just so you know.
They don't have to be in the group to be two parents, right?
How many members does anyone know of the P T S A do we have, because their P T S A includes parents from every single school.
They could be, but they they wouldn't have to be, right?
For this purpose, they would be because you would have, if you want to have a parent on the panel, then you would have the option of picking a parent to be on the panel. You can pick any parent that you.
We did our choice.
Right.
I think including more parents from the P T S A would that idea, I think it's it's good because I know they're very interested as well as, you know, D LAC, I'm sure. With the same situation.
There that probably some of these that they're, they are parents.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I'm not going to sit on the panel, but I'm a parent of this.
Right, so I'm just saying.
Purpose there, but I'm not. Restricted to only parents that are that belong to these groups is back to, it's only this groups again.
For that purpose, but that's why we're each getting our own choice of who we would like to bring, and you may bring a parent if that's who you.
No, so that's the one each, right? But when, when she suggested to two parents, that to me, it shouldn't have to be two parents that are again part of these groups, it could be any.
Well, do you?
Right, that's, that's just another idea.
My, my impression of the P T S A and the D LAC groups is that these are the parents who are the most involved in their schools. They volunteer, they take on responsibilities, they're really engaged in their schools. So these are parents that don't have an agenda other than they have the experience of being involved in their schools. So it's not like a group with an ideology, they don't have, you know, I'm sure it's, they're fairly diverse groups of parents, because parents don't always agree, but and as, as Dr. McCray was saying, I might still want to use my one slot to appoint a parent that I was particularly impressed with. You know, we've certainly heard a lot of parents over the six months we've been together, and some of them have impressed me, but they may not be on the, in those two organizations. Or I might pick someone from the community who I think is an important voice and has an important perspective. And, you know, I've only got that one slot, but I I will think very carefully about.
Right, and perhaps they might not be part of any of those groups, but it would still give them a voice, so.
Right. Right, so we get to sixteen. Fifteen and sixteen.
We're going to P T S A to D LAC.
Yeah. So we probably need, this is where I want to ask you as our leader from Leadership Associates. When do board members and when does, when, when does everybody, when do you have to have everybody's names? Of who's going to be so that we can get them lined up for the May twentieth interview panel?
Well, we won't be providing them with an in-service or anything like that, so they'll show up and get the kind of the orientation, if you will, that evening. Before I go on, may I introduce Bill Banning, who's going to be with us? Okay, good, this is Mr. Bill Banning, he is one of our Leadership Associates Associates, he'll be with us that day and also on the eleventh. Bill worked here for sixteen years in Fallbrook, so he's a local, knows the local scene. He was superintendent of Galleta School District. And currently is a member of the Santa Barbara City, Santa Barbara Schools, right? Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Trustees, so he's a board member. And just a very wise former H R director as well, just a very talented man, so Bill Banning, I'll him say a few things.
Good question. Do we work at Potter?
I did.
Computer science teacher?
I started at Potter Junior High School teaching computer science, basic programming on Apple two E's with five and a quarter inch floppy disks. In nineteen eighty-nine, and I was at Potter for several years. I was appointed as a short-term assistant principal, without time, I didn't have my credential. That turned into a credentialed position as the assistant principal at Potter Junior High School. I spent a year as the assistant principal at Mary, Mary Fay Pendleton School. I spent two years as the principal of Live Oak Elementary School, and six years as the principal of Potter Junior High School. So I, I grew up here, I definitely, as a leader, as an administrator, I did grow up here. And it was great opportunities to be mentored and helped and encouraged and do good work for the community. It's a pleasure to be back with you. I will also share just another little bit, I met my current wife while I was at Potter Junior High School. She's waiting for me down in Escondido, she may be watching right now. And her two children left Potter and graduated from Fallbrook Union High School. So I have a lot of, a lot of interest in, in the community, and I would just say, if it wasn't for Fallbrook. I wouldn't have the incredible leadership experiences that I've had in my career. And so I'm glad to be here and be part of, of helping for, for this incredibly important decision that you have to make. It's nice to meet you all.
I think it's really terrific that you know our schools from the inside, I mean, that's, that's a, I would not have expected that. And that's a, a real gift to us, that you will understand what we're looking for.
Absolutely, absolutely. And having experienced working both in town and on the, on the military base. I was also a member of the Kiwanis in, in Fallbrook for a while. And have kept active with. Community organizations everywhere I've been, so.
Have a dynamic, a dynamite team between the.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Getting back to that, when, when do we need to have our people lined up? So we know that there's, there. Are we giving them any background information ahead of time, like?
No, you know, a big part of this is the confidentiality, it's major.
Oh, not on people's names, but just the job.
The job itself.
What they're, not, not the job, well, I'm.
That typically takes place during the orientation that day. So they'll show up, we'll give them an orientation as to what the proceedings are. What the plan is for us is to take oral input from them, after all of the candidates have interviewed. Come into the room and share that with you. It'll be either Mr. Banning or myself doing that, so you know. The panel's point of view regarding strengths and challenges, they will not rank. Because the worst thing would be for them to rank and be opposite with the way you rank. Because then you create a little bit of a political problem you didn't anticipate, which we don't want. The smaller the committee, the better, I know you're talking about sixteen now. Remember the stakeholders here clearly are the community, but parents as well, so. The parent voice needs to be heard, because they have children currently in the school. So between the unions and the management and the unions, I mean, the unions, the parents. And the management and the teachers, they're your groups, and there are key community members, as you mentioned. You definitely want their voice as well. But if there aren't any parents in the community side. That would be a, a bit of a problem in my view, because they're those, they're your real clients, they're your real stakeholders. It's one man's opinion from a lot of experience, but you know, you'll make your decision. The panel is very large at sixteen, because what it waters down is everybody's opinion, right? If we asked everybody in this room an opinion about the Padres. I know we bring in one, one point of view, right? Or the Padres and the Dodgers, we might get a few different points of view. Point is, the smaller, the more concise the information will be that we'll be able to give you. So between Bill and I, we're gonna pull that together and, and report it out to you. Does that make sense?
We still make it work at sixteen, or?
It's just a matter of.
Can I make one point, please? Because of something that I've said, so stakeholders, in this case, you correct me if I'm wrong. But they don't all live in the community, they work in our district, a lot of them, but. But they don't live in the. Yes, so. Yeah, they're. It's the shareholders that live in the community, but not necessarily the stakeholders.
But I meant the parents, I was referring to the parents. So you have a decision to make, and certainly we can accommodate whatever you want, it's just, you know, sixteen people is a lot of people, but we can do it.
Okay, then I think I'm ready to make a motion. You can't, I'm sorry. The time to do that was during the.
You're out of order, and we're, it's now the boards, we're having the discussion, so. We're respectfully letting you know that we're having discussions, so this is now our discussion type for this, so thank, so thank you, so thank you, so thank you.
So, all right, did you wanna ask a question before we have a motion?
Yeah, so on. Thinking on what he just said, we have too big of a number. So to be, and, and you wanted to go with whatever he recommended. Okay, maybe you, I meant, like, people have said, we need to go with as much as he recommends. And he's telling us that's too big of a number, so could we possibly bring it down? And so. So that it's, so there's not that huge of a number, bring it back down to. What would be a good number, like ten? We remove the two and make it back down to one for those two. Groups, and then we still have our age, our individual pick. Okay, what do you mean by that? That when we raised the number from the P T A to, from one to two, and from the D LAC from one to two, we would go back down to one. Okay, but again, those are the parents. Except that's, th- then you'd have to remove the other groups is the only thing, that's why when. Or then you would have to remove some of the other group, right? You wanted to then make it even, so that it's shareholders and stockholders. Then you would have to decide which groups you would want to remove, but that was the purpose of why I thought you wanted each person to have their choice of who they wanted to bring. Because then if they wanted to bring parents, conceivably, there could be five more parents on the board. But we're now, we're now going on the recommendation, this is too much. We knew it was too much, but that's what we said when we added the two that you wanted, so.
And you raise a good point, as you think about stakeholders and shareholders. I, I think of it similarly, I think of it, the inside staff and parents as stakeholders. And I think of the community as the community. And I don't think that they need, in fact, they shouldn't be.
Change the name and say community and stakeholders, okay, that's fine.
Two communities, one is inside, one is outside. These are people who, who manage and run the district.
Community inside and community outside.
You know, I, you have to have a principal, you have to have somebody from the management team, you can't exclude the unions. We wanna have D LAC and, and P T A. And then the question would be, do you eliminate the extended learning program and special ed and migrant ed? Because that's the only other place you could do that. But those are really big components of the district and, and.
So you got management, you've got cabinet slash, what do you call it?
Well, it's the management team and cabinet is one person, one appointing group, that's one person. The principal is a site administrator, so that's a second person. Then you have, we have two unions, why do we have to have the unions?
That's what I don't understand.
They speak for our teachers and they speak for our employees, we have eight hundred employees, that's a big voice.
Aren't part of these groups have the employees?
No, you don't have any teachers in this, these are all people who run programs. The, the special education appointee.
Then why couldn't we actually change unions to employees? C S A is the classified, and the PETA is the teachers, and then you have the management, and then. What is it that you're looking to? Okay, so, so management is part of the classified, and so is. No, management is management, management is its own entity. That's why it's under with cabinet members, okay, but. So then.
If you were to think of a chart, okay, so at the top of the chart is the superintendent. With the associate superintendent, and then in that same group categorized are the management team. So it's the head of transportation, the head of child nutrition services. Student services, that's all, that's all one category, that's really the management, right? So then you go down that, and then we have, it breaks up into just two categories. Classified employees and the credentialed employees who are the teachers. So that's eight hundred people right there, and the folks above the line are not, and they're not union members. They're management, so it's like a business, you know, they're the vice presidents and the presidents. Then you, so you want your teachers represented, and you want your credential, non-credit, you know, your classified representative. And then, so that's, that's all we have in that group. What we were thinking about was below that, below the management team line. Having people who run these big programs, special ed, migrant ed, and extended learning. And then parents. Hispanic, regular, and then board member appointees. And we wouldn't wanna lose that, I think it's really important that board members have the opportunity to appoint someone. Again, to reflect somebody from outside or inside the community, you know. So I think the only, there are only two options that I'm thinking we have, if we wanna get the group panel number lower. One is we have one person coming from D LAC and one person coming from the P T A, that gets our number down to fourteen. Or we take out the program representatives, one, two, or three of them, the extended learning program, special education, migrant ed.
Could ask the director of special education to recommend a parent that's representing special ed. So you get the perspective. That's a good idea. Special education, but it's a parent. I, possibly the same for the after-school program, or, you know, that would, to try and get more parents, but still hear from. That group and their interests. We, we would be then, we would be micromanaging certain groups in. The only issue, and then, that's what we said we weren't going to do, is we were going to let them make their decisions on who they were going to pick. Okay, then I would go back to take out the unions, and if it's a teachers' union that let, we pick a teacher. To represent the teachers, I'm sure there's teachers that are very involved and more active and more. You know, to speak sometimes for the other teachers, and then the same thing with the other, pick an employee. So the teachers will be represented by a teacher, and the teachers to be represented by an employee. Or the print, the employees, we represent by employees, and the unions go out.
This is the fun part of getting more involved in the district, and it takes time, but let me tell you what the fun part is. I've had the, the honor and the ple- pleasure of meeting the, some of the top people in the union. One of them was selected on Monday as the teacher of the year for La Paloma, and that was Mr. Dale Leonard. And he's considered what, or I call them master teachers. He's been teaching for twenty-four years, he's an extraordinary teacher, I happen to have the pleasure of knowing him. The head of the bargaining unit happens to be Dale Leonard's cohort. He teaches English Language Arts and Social Studies, and Mr. Leonard teaches science and math. And he is the head of the bargaining unit, and he is also a master teacher, I think he's been teaching for.
What's the connection with Dale Leonard?
They are, they teach this, at the same school, they teach fifth and sixth graders. Their classrooms are next to each other, and one, and so one teacher teaches the math and science. And the other teaches English Language Arts and Social Studies, so they. What you'll also see at our schools is there's a lot of collaboration between teachers who are teaching the same kids.
And they're both.
They're both in senior positions in the.
The unions, and two different unions.
Same union, teachers union, and the person who's the president of the union, I've gotten to know from a committee I've served on. And that's Jen Mariucci, and she too is a master teacher, she's been what's called a T O S A. She's taught in the classroom, she's, I mean, you would know more than I would what her background is, but she's very, very, very impressive. So if you, if you, if you knew any one of those three, and I don't know if that's who they're gonna pick. They really are master teachers, and they're teachers who've been in the district a really long time. They have been recognized for their success in working with kids. And on top of that, they have taken on this added responsibility of representing. All the other teachers that are at every school, so they're very highly thought of, because it's, you know, you vote to select them. So it's not like somebody appointed them. You wouldn't have had a reason to have met these folks.
I'm, I, I know who Leonard is.
Yeah, right, because we met Dale, but Ken Ostrowski is the head of the bargaining unit. And Jen Mariucci is the president. So I, I say that to say, we don't have to randomly pick a teacher. The bargain, the people who are in leadership roles are amongst the best that we have. They're certainly not the only ones who are the best, but they are among the best that we have. And they have been elected by their teachers to represent them, so that.
You're talking about unions.
Everybody, oh, I think if I'm right, all our teachers belong to the union, right? So every, every teacher is a member of the union.
But you're talking about the union leaders at this point.
They've been elected by the teachers, or by the classified employees. So in that case.
And again, what two groups would you want considered removing? I wouldn't either, I would just lower the two numbers that we already had, and that way we would still keep all of our. Well, and I still, what two would you consider removing? And not, not the parents, and leave the parents. Well, we wouldn't be removing parents, we would just be keeping it one, one per group. I understand, but. Yeah, and you just said, removing to make it one instead of two parents, so. To keep the parents, to make it more even of stakeholders or community in, community out, even. What two would you consider removing of community in? To keep a more balance of community, of the community, people, the parents, the people in the community. Well, I was looking at it from the perspective of the balance of the community would come from each of our choices, because we would probably be picking a parent from the community. Which would then actually give even more in that field. So give numbers, what numbers are you talking about? That if all of, that, that Mr. Favela's list, that thank you for writing that down, Miss Lindine, that if we kept each of those categories at one. Per category. Then we would be making up the other side of that with our choices, so if eat, let's just go with this example, if each of us picked a parent. That would be five parents, plus the two from.
That would be five parents plus the two from those categories. That would essentially be seven parents. That would be fifty percent of what. Is on the, on the list.
So the nine plus five is the fourteen, but so it's nine. Nine stockholders and five.
Well, everybody's a stakeholder is how I look at it. Everybody's a stakeholder. There's no one more or less important because everybody has their voice and they're all important, equally important. That's why when you say remove a group or which group would you like to say we will remove? Would you like to remove the D LAC? Would you like to remove the P T A? Because I think every one of those groups is an important voice.
You bring up a good point, um. It would be seven parents on the, on a fourteen member.
Or conceivably, there would be two. There would be two.
I can't commit that I will.
Well, no, nobody would, but there would, but there would be two that would be guaranteed with, with the, with what we already have. And then we have the opportunity to add to that. With our choice.
But we don't know if that would happen.
And so nobody can hear, well, nobody can.
We would all pick a parent.
Nobody can hear who anybody would pick because that's going to be your personal choice.
So we back, it could very possibly still be nine to five. And still not even.
It, it shouldn't have to be even. It's not like they're gonna vote. It's not like they're gonna vote. There's, they are, there is no vote. As you were saying, it's not a vote. They're all giving their individual perspectives. That's what we want. I mean, that's why we're having a panel. Is to, to allow. People who have skin in the game in one way or another. To give us the benefit of their feedback with the same candidates that we will be interviewing. And, and am I correct? Do they use the same questions that the board uses?
That's what I would suggest, yes.
Yeah, so it's apples to apples. We'll find out, you know, what they think about the answers to those questions. Um, I won't be swayed more by one of the fourteen. I, I will take in all fourteen. And I may not entirely agree, but I will. You know, want to know what all fourteen.
Well, because even really, it, it could almost be a blind panel. You don't need to know that you in particular. You don't need to know that this particular comment came from a D LAC participant or from the. Um, cabinet, the cat, the comment should be the comments. They shouldn't be attached to anybody's particular position whatsoever anyway.
That's true.
I think it's also important to keep in mind that P T S A is an organization who rep- they represent. Parents, many parents. Um, D LAC is a parent organization. The district.
They're two very large groups. Not willing to bring down the numbers. It's not going to be seven and five or. Six and six. So that's what, okay, that, okay, no, all right.
You bit, to keep it.
It can be seven and five if we bring the parents down to one parent from each of the two parent groups. That would get you the seven and five. Five from the board and. Seven, if I'm doing my math right. Um, it would be, um, the management team slash cabinet appointee. The site administrator, which is the principal. Uh, three programs, the extended learning program, the special education program and migrant ed, those three programs.
Extended, extended education or.
Extended learning, that's the, um, one Miss McBride, that is. The before school, after school, yep, that's that one. Um, special education and migrant ed. And, and then one parent from the P T A, P T S A, and then one parent from D LAC.
Would be nine.
So that would get us to seven, actually.
That would be nine.
I stand corrected. It'll either be nine or eleven. You're right. I stand corrected, the two unions. So that's nine plus five. And it, it would make it a little more challenging for you to manage that panel, but, um. I think. I, I think we could make it work, right, right? So, um.
By the way.
Fourteen. Well, let's, let's just see what happens if we call for a vote.
Yeah.
Um.
And remember you have a motion on the floor.
I didn't finish it.
Oh, no, no, she, Mr. Favela started with.
Oh, did you?
A motion. Did you not?
Made a proposal. I don't know if we caught, but.
Okay.
You could make the motion.
Well, I'll make the motion to form, um. Uh, an additional interview panel. Uh, consisting of, uh, one principal, one PETA rep. One C S A rep, one D LAC rep. One migrant ed rep. A P T A, a parent organization rep. Um, one rep from special education. One rep from the extended learning program. One representing the cabinet management. And then five community members. Um. Decided by each board member nominating one. Um. Can be a member of the choice. So as lo- so long as the person is not related to any of the candidates. Some motion.
Hey, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then I will call for the vote, Ms. Sabal. Hi. Thank you, Ms. Lindin.
Hi.
Mr. Favela.
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. McBride.
We should abstain, but.
You may.
You should abstain. You don't have a conflict of interest. That would, a financial conflict or interest would let you abstain, but this is in a financial conflict of interest.
Hi. And I will, I as well, motion passes. All right, that moves us to item number two, information discussion, board policy nine, three, two, three, meeting comment, or sorry, conduct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
There are comments. For this item. A J Nice. Judy Willis. Sarah Jenkins.
I'd like an explanation to why we comment on every other agenda, but not. The one before.
Just want to mention that we do have comment.
I know, and I signed up for it. So why didn't I get to speak before you voted?
All the parts over here.
I, I put three cards in there. I had three cards in there.
You weren't here. Princing is, is related to the public comment section. It is not entitled you to be able to speak at whatever time during that agenda item that you want. I have a legal opinion that supports.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna get a different legal opinion and I have two board members from other boards telling me every agenda item. If you put on the agenda, I have the right to comment on.
All right, let us continue with the section. Let's continue with the section that we're on, please.
Appreciate that. I, I do appreciate that. I'm just letting you know what I'm being told by other board.
So go ahead and we'll take your three minutes of comment. Thank you.
And I think that puts your vote in jeopardy. Okay, sorry, here, here we go. So basically, here's what I want to say. Um, when posting a meeting on a website, uh, or via the email, the start time of the closed session should be separated from the open session. And people should not be asked to sign up before the closed session ever. But rather, um, during the port- public portion of the board meeting, every other school board or board meeting I have attended allows for people to sign up to speak all the way up to that agenda item. Not just before the meeting starts. Forcing people to have to be, um, be here in person and sign up to speak before a closed session or at the beginning of a journal session. Only gravy, gravely disenfranchises the working class and is not equitable or, as I like to say, fair. It ca- caters to the retired, those who don't have to work. Or who have flexible schedules and can create safety issues for those feeling like they have to race here to get here on time from work. This is truly a suppression of a majority of people's voices in their ability to speak and a threat to their safety. That is why I'm asking that you also allow for remote comments via ver- um, via virtual means like a secure site. Such as go to meeting that counselors use as well as phone and written comments. Due to technology, this is easy to provide and is not a violation of the Brown Act as other boards such as. The Fallbrook Planning Group, Fallbrook Medical Board and the San Diego Board of Supervisors as well as other school boards allow, allow for this type of comment. Because they truly care to hear from those they represent and help aid in making that happen by removing all obstacles. Busy parents and single parents, especially in low come areas such as ours, may not be able to afford childcare to attend in-person meetings. If they work all day, um, all day, evenings are their only time with their kids and they need to pick them up from school, take them to a sport or a music practice, perhaps. Get home, make dinner, do homework, feed them, get them bathed and ready for bed at a reasonable time. So you can see some of the challenges trying to get here. But they can au- they can often join in remotely and listen to a meeting while multitasking and be available to speak when called upon. Since you all rarely respond back in the same meeting, there should be little concern that they missed your answer and they can always be directed to watch the YouTube video to hear it again. Or have it answered in an email in a timely fashion. You all were elected and were appointed to represent the community and you cannot do that if you are more concerned about how much time it will take or how long the medium will go. Instead of really wanting to consider what people have to say. Tonight was a good step in the right direction, but when people show up to speak, it should, you should value their time and great efforts to get here and you, um. And to ta- it should be important enough, um, to listen, um. You should follow the spirit of a board meeting over the letter of the board policy. You have the power to be flexible. I've seen other boards do it. I've seen boards grant twenty, over twenty minutes when a lot of the part, public shows up and is concerned. Very concerned. I hope you will do so in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Paul Coleman.
I am Paul Coleman. I'm a member of this community. And, uh. I would like to. Compliment the board for, uh. Their diligent work in, uh. Trying to, uh. Select a superintendent. And I just hope that you, uh. Pick a superintendent. Who will. Have the interest of the students. In mind and will be best for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Netezias Estamos.
Thank you. Good evening again. So, um, my husband has always advised me that, um, if I write a letter when I'm upset. That I should set it aside for twenty-four hours. And then reread it. And if I still feel the same. After that time, then descend it. Well, I must tell you that in fact, I wrote you all a letter on Monday night and I sat on it for a couple of days. And I'm still upset about what happened on Monday, but I think it's more important that I clarify why I'm upset. And that is because of the manner in which the meeting was conducted on Monday. I am by nature and upbringing a rule follower. I appreciate and respect the twenty minute rule for a specific topic. But Board President McGray has not only allowed other people to speak for longer than twenty minutes on a specific topic at past meetings. But she's also allowed one speaker to take an additional six minutes of yielded time. And then was allowed to keep on speaking after those nine minutes ran out. I'm frankly disappointed in how folks have been allowed to break the set rules of these public meetings in order to quote unquote be heard. So yes, I thought it was wrong that the rules were going to be applied when you have a group of people who wanted to speak up for upholding. The agreed upon process and not for those who wanted to lobby for a specific purpose, in this case. Um, pleading Mr. Clement's case. In the past, someone was allowed to submit a public comment after the deadline of six o'clock to make her comment. I was there at that meeting. And I came in a minute before she did and I did not submit a card because I was too late. She was allowed to submit a card and was allowed to speak. So what does that tell people like myself that get here at four thirty, that bring my husband to try to get here in time to get the cards in, the rule followers? What does it tell us about those that try to do, um, try to follow the process? What it tells us is that the rules are not being firmly, fairly and consistently applied. And therefore I felt that the actions of Monday was wrong. Not that the twenty minute limit is wrong, not that the not yielding of the, of the additional time is wrong, but that we were not advised prior to. In fact, the only time on Monday that any flexibility was considered. Was for people who plainly, plain, blatantly, blan- blan- blatantly disregarded the rules and put in a card for a number of Jane Joe, Jane, Jane Does. Just so that anyone from that group, if they showed up, they would be allowed to speak and that's not fair. I applaud you for putting this item on the agenda and for talking about it. Because as I have mentioned, you are new and you're learning. But if you're going to be making mistakes, it would be best to make them in the effort to be fair to everybody. So it doesn't appear as if one group is being favored over another. So I appreciate that you're reviewing these policies and I appreciate your work and your time and your service. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for comment on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Favela. All right. Discussion among the board.
I'd like to throw out five. Topics related to this and see if.
Oh, sorry, we need a motion. Do we have a motion, Ms.?
Yes, thank you.
Of course.
Um. I make a motion that the board. Uh. Approved a specific policy. Relating to the amount of time. And the manner in which we now.
Have to think about this because I don't, I don't.
What does it say on here?
Informational item.
It's an informational item. Okay, so we don't, then we don't have to have a motion because we don't, it's discussion only, right? Or do we have a motion?
You had to have it to open up the discussion.
Oh, okay. Um, okay. I move that we discuss board policy nine, three, two, three.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Favela.
Thank you, thank you. So I was just jotting down what I think the components of this are and. I, that's all it is, is jotted down now so we can. Tackle some of them, all of them add to it. One is, um, a firm decision regarding how many minutes are allowed for any individual speaker. Two, a policy regarding giving away minutes, yay or nay. They can or they can't. Three, the maximum time per issue is at twenty minutes. Three. Um, are comments required to be made as they are now in person only or remote as well? And then four, five, um. This whole sense of when a speaker card must be completed and, um. That would be, is it a set time, ten minutes before meetings start? Are there any exceptions? Those were the things I could think of when it, it had to do with speakers speaking. And it addresses some of the issues that were brought up today, which have been an issue. Uh, in our board.
Okay, and, and if I may point of clarification, it is, it is a seeding of minutes. And what normally happens is if someone is up there speaking on whatever their topic is, and let's say they use two minutes and they have a minute left. Then it would be seeding of that minute to someone else. It is not the filling out of multiple cards so people can just hand off minutes.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's multiple things actually. You, because you're right. I've seen it where someone says, I only use two minutes. Let me give my minute away. You cannot give away minutes is my thought.
Right, so it's.
If you have three minutes, if you use it, great. If you use one minute, fine, that's great, but you don't get to give away your two unused minutes. If I want to talk for six minutes, then I need to go to a different board meeting because I wouldn't be able to talk for six minutes here. And the point I would like to make about that, because I've really thought a lot about this over the last week, knowing that we were going to be discussing this. Is, um. When, when we as board members. Talk about an issue, we try to be very brief. And three minutes. And three minutes is plenty of time to get a point across. About what your, what your perspective is on something, if you want an action taken and what that action ought to be. And I actually practiced uh at home several times. I thought, alright Suzanne, think about. Something you know you'd want to talk about, can you do it in three minutes? And the answer is yes. So I think three minutes is plenty of time. Maybe we tackle that first and get that one. Again, we're not making a decision today. But maybe we can just see where we have consensus and where we don't.
I, I think sometimes there's different points at different meetings that they need more than three minutes. And I would say give it to them. And the, the, the twenty minutes. I too have been to other board meetings and sometimes it like the superintendent selection. That we have lots of people that want to make comments and stuff. You have to go past that sometimes. It's just something you do for the public, for the community.
That's when we can also designate an item as a forum as well, right? So there's different, there's. There's uh open session, open hearings, but. When there's a need to have a forum and allow people to go over the three minutes and that gets uh agendized as a forum. But it's possible. We have those options as well. Yeah, um so it's important to know, you know, what's, what's open, what's a hearing session and what would be good for a forum.
And where does, when does that get decided?
Maybe we can see what the policy is on a forum. I mean, this, this is a good chance, a good opportunity to revisit. And so, I mean, and that's decided by when the agenda's set.
We had a forum, if I recall, on redistricting. Um and it began before, or it was at the top of the agenda. Because when, when we were having to redistrict, it was a big issue. And we knew a lot of people wanted to talk about it. So we agendized it as a forum and I can't remember whether it was. Completely separate, but it happened right before. It was like at four thirty or five o'clock. And it was at that meeting, we got lots and lots of people providing input, but then the meeting itself started and, you know.
To the point of what Diane said, I totally agree with Diane. I remember coming and watching people like Mrs. Forrest. And her having done a bunch of research and not being able to finish all that she had to say. And it was very educational because she always comes very, very prepared. Same thing with um Mrs. Um. Tara, I'm sorry. Jenkins, I'm sorry, Mrs. Jenkins. She's always very prepared and she has more to say than what she can say and I can tell she's talking very fast. So I agree totally with Diane on that part. That people and those, you know, people from different points of views. That just are um. Very well, very good speakers. Tend to be uh people that are very uh active. In being involved and informed and want to give. You know, their, their, not just their own group, not just themselves information, but. Their, the people in their community, their friends, their, you know, families that they are representing. And those are the two I can think of, but I know that I've seen more, you know, but, but as far as names, those are the two I can think of.
So let me just, because I'm always looking out for perfection of the district. What I wouldn't want to happen is, because we're talking about the number of minutes per speaker right now. Different from the number of minutes per top, per topic. And this was upon advice of legal counsel. You need to be consistent with the amount of time you give individuals because. If you're not, the one who was kept to three minutes for whatever reason. Um could say that they were being discriminated against and how come and especially. I'll say it in these times of, uh you know, different political views. Um there, people are very sensitive, so I think whatever you decide and, and maybe it's making it longer, whatever that is. It just, it has to be applied consistently, not because somebody, I still have more to say. It just, I mean, otherwise you're going to set up for that now, when you're talking about the amount of time per topic, that's a different issue.
Excuse me, and I think, aren't we talking about, this is the connection with seeding the minutes? No, no? Okay.
No, okay. This is just when someone gets up and that clock is set, how much time are we giving? You arbitrarily decide that because someone wasn't finished, they could have two more minutes. What about the person that, well, I would have prepared five minutes if I knew you were going to give two more to continue.
Yeah, that's different, that's different.
So that's the point I would want to make to the board on that.
I come, I combined them. I thought we were combining the two, okay.
Dr. McCray, what do you think?
I've been to many a board meeting as well and I truly believe that three minutes is enough to. Be concise about what you need to say. That um there are times when obviously if we go to some different type of forum, we could do it that way. That if it was a topic that would require further discussion, we would look at it at that particular board meeting to see about. Extending on those particular issues, but overall for any given meeting, three minutes would be an appropriate amount of time.
In that case, I, I agree because I was thinking of the seeding the minutes.
Right, and we need to have efficient meetings, which means we get through the agenda as quickly as possible.
Three minutes, boom.
We got folks that have been working here since the morning, they would like to go home as soon as possible. I mean, we got to keep in mind um all those in attendance. Especially staff, yeah.
Well, is there a possibility of ever having our board meetings during the day? Yes. I mean, it would just need to be, you know, agendized that way, just like a special meeting. You know, um we've had special meetings and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lindsay. Where they were like at nine in the morning or whatever, when we had board workshops on presentations or whatever, the special board meeting where they occurred during the day.
Yeah, but they've always been um workshops where it's been a working meeting. Um I, I think the thing that Mr. Pivella brought up is, is very true. A, a board meeting is a business meeting. And um the public hearing portion is one portion. But there, as we've seen in our board meetings, sometimes we'll have a presentation from. The curriculum or finance or whatever. I am dying to have some of our NFUASD students come. And do a little panel for us, you know, where they're talking to us, but we have to have enough time in the meeting to do that, otherwise we're routinely going home at like nine thirty or ten. That might not work. I don't think we need to, you know, be that kind of a board, so um. I, I think understanding when there's going to be an issue that's really either controversial. Or really important, then we might want to say, okay, is this the time to have a forum? And schedule that.
And plan accordingly for those particular incidents, but the rest of the time it should be this standard.
I'd like to get to the question of, since we've got some thoughts on that seeding minutes. Um I think that's a popularity contest, actually.
Yes, and here, here's where the issue will arise. When we go down to the next issue of a twenty-minute max, if we allow people to seed minutes. That would essentially give one person the opportunity to speak for the entire twenty minutes. It wouldn't go over the time, but it would still only give that person the time to speak and essentially other people wouldn't be able to speak.
If I were a person in the community and I didn't know other people in the community, but I wanted to talk about an issue. I would be sitting in a chair and I'd have only three minutes. If I know a lot of people and I say, Ricardo, give me your three minutes. Diane, give me your three, I've got nine minutes now and we were at a meeting where that actually happened. Um. I think again, that goes back to the question of fairness and consistency. Um I think it is important that we treat everybody the same way.
But the last meeting, we cut everybody off and they only had one minute.
Because we wanted to keep to the twenty minutes in fairness of giving everybody their time or else we would have only allowed five speakers at three minutes each, give or take six speakers. And that would have.
But we can go over that twenty minutes.
Well, we can, we can vote on it, right?
Correct.
Right, yeah, and I agree with you.
But that would be when we have those particular high interest topics and then we would agendize to make sure that we could go over. That time to allow for the comments to be made.
In fact, if I'm not mistaken, there was a meeting. Pretty soon after I came on the board where we knew there was going to be a lot. And we said, alright, let's just, and I don't remember what the board policy said, but we said, let's just know that we're going to have thirty minutes. And that if we have fifteen people, everybody gets two minutes. You know, and, and it turned out we did have fifteen and already got two minutes and they kind of got it done. I think one minute's really tough. I'd like, I'd like.
We just didn't expect that many people. Pull any cards from that, so.
You know, what we could do is we could have as part of the board policy, if at the beginning of a meeting. There are, you know, over, say, ten speakers on a topic. Then the board would have the option of deciding, voting to say, alright, we've got fifteen speakers. Let's extend the time to thirty minutes, the board agrees. And it's formally set that way and everybody gets the same amount of time.
Which would essentially be cutting it down to two minutes per person.
Right, but I think it's. I think we were all struggling with people only having one minute, but um that's, that's what we had.
I would propose it being, it would never be less than two minutes, even if it was, even if we have to stay. You know, that's what we're here for. We are servants and if we need to stay, we need to stay. But people need to be allowed to speak at least two minutes, one minute would just.
I agree. But then that gets to, I, the whole question of seeding. Again, to be fair, I think we just say everybody gets three minutes unless there are too many people, then you can get. Less than that, but not less than two minutes.
Right, right.
And nobody gives away minutes. You can't just come up and say, hey, I've got six minutes to talk because such and such gave me the time. Um so if I hear what we're saying, we, we sound okay about three minutes a speaker, no giving away minutes. However, if it looks like there are going to be more, ten or more speakers for a topic. That we extend it so that every speaker gets two minutes and never less than two.
You're almost there with me, except that if it's, if it's, if it's twenty minutes and they're. They're not more than ten people.
Alright, that's why we said two minutes regardless.
Right, 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 I understand that, I understand that.
Won't put a time limit if there are more than ten and give them at least two minutes.
Right, I, yes, and I'm going to a totally different thing than you're.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, well, I'm just, for clarification, so if twenty-five people showed up. To talk on and you have the cards, you would give them a minimum of two minutes each.
Right.
So you would extend that time to fifty minutes, twenty-five, two minutes each, fifty minutes.
Right, 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 so we're good on, or, or, we understand that part. Um so the only part that I'm pulling away from that is that. If there's not a, which is the normal, is not over ten people asking to speak, right? Uh that's the average. That was unusual. That was unusual and I'm sure it'll happen again, but it's not the norm, right? I, I don't agree that because we're doing all the other things that we need to take away. I, well, my proposal would be that they still get to get one time. Uh what do you call it? Uh giveaway minutes. They, they get to take minutes from one other person, so seeding the minutes. So the total would be, they could have up to six minutes or a lot of times they need one more minute. And they use up one more minute of the other three that got handed to them from someone else, just like the bus driver.
Okay, but what you're saying is then somebody would potentially be getting up there to get their three minutes and they would rush it through to be two minutes to give their minute away, which why can't they say what needs to be said in the three minutes? So they don't have to give the minute away to the other person.
Well, that's, that's where we go back to when Mrs. Forrest and Mrs. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I can't remember.
Because really seeding of minutes is not supposed to be a habitual practice. It's supposed to be if you were legitimately up there for the three minutes and maybe you did get two and a half minutes and then you had thirty seconds left. And somebody, you know, that, but.
And I believe Mrs. Stamos too might, may need. I think because she, she, one, uh one of the, well, the book, the, where the farm was, where they were the only two here. She said she brought her husband so that in case she needed to speak extra. So there's, you know, there's other people. I, I still believe that they should be able to get at, well, may. And it could be maximum six because they're getting the seated minutes from.
Well, but remember seeded minutes aren't just giving away minutes. Seeding minutes is you got up there to legitimately speak on that topic and you spoke on that topic. And then if there was extra time that you didn't utilize, then it would be the seeding of minutes. It's not the objective, if here's my three minutes.
Okay, so the giveaway minutes, whatever you.
It's not giving, it's seeding. It's, it's not giving away, it's seeding minutes.
But in some cases it is giving away. It's before someone even speaks, they say, hey, I'm not going to speak, but I'll give you my.
That's not considered seeding, seeding, because the seeding of the minutes is you would be legitimately going up there to speak. And you would be speaking on that topic, not, hi, now I've used a second, now there's, that's not.
I think, I think you opened the door for real issues. You know, again, it gets back to fairness. Um I really think it's important that we not show favoritism. It's just, that's not our role.
Minutes, you get three minutes.
Everybody should get three minutes and it shouldn't be, well, you know, that person's more interesting. So let's give them the opportunity to get more time. I, I don't think that's fair.
And that, I don't think it works quite that way. At least I haven't seen it work quite that way about who's interesting. It was people that came so prepared. It's so informed. Mrs. Mrs. Forrest said she did a whole bunch of research before she came and spoke. I've seen her speak before we. Before the three of us were on the board, I would come and sit and she came with all her, her research. Ready to speak and then she couldn't finish what she was saying and all I'm saying is just let them have. One person be able to get from, because your point before was that, well, they'll, they'll use one person, I believe one of you two said it. Will use up total twenty minutes, they'll have this person, that person, that person. Right, right, that, and, but you all brought it up.
Here's, here's a solution.
Also mentioned that Mrs. Forrest used those three minutes, understood, and then she sent us an email.
That was exactly what I was going to say.
Looking out for the district, let's please.
Yeah, that was the term that I was saying, but she saw the, the other way around.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Let's not refer to any people's names in these examples because one way or the other. This is not about customizing it because of who gives them.
No, and it was, and this, they're just.
But out of pure caution.
Okay, alright.
I'm advising that we do not use any names as examples because it, it, that's a.
That's a no-no.
And really, if somebody has this much to say, take out the meat of what you're saying. And put it into a three-minute.
Or if you know you want to say a lot or have a lot of information. Put it down in an email and send it to the whole board. We've certainly gotten emails from people in the last few weeks on the topic of the superintendent search. It gives somebody an opportunity to say as much as they want, it's all there, you know. And then they can say an abbreviated version of that when they come in person. I hope, it's not that we don't want to hear what they have to say, it's that we need to keep the meeting running appropriately. So if someone knows ahead of time because they're doing the research, that's going to take a long time. If you typed it up, just shoot off, shoot it off as an email.
I have to make a comment to you saying appropriately because I've also been to other board meetings. Multiple and they give, so this would be like saying they're inappropriate. To give, to, to let them have minutes from someone else. So none of this, this isn't because it's inappropriate and it, because then they're all inappropriate.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying for us and our own, I mean, I know boards too, they, they routinely meet till ten or eleven o'clock at night. I don't think any of us want to be here for four hours or five hours. I mean, it's not necessary. There are so many things that we can or should be doing during a board meeting. Like having our students, you know, do a panel for us or having parents come and talk to us. There. There are lots of things we can be doing with that time in addition to hearing from our community on issues they feel are important. I just don't think the only reason we're here is to do that because that turns in, that is a forum. And there's no reason not to have forums, but that's a whole separate thing. Um and we could have a forum during the day or on a weekend. Every board does it differently. Every board creates its own rules, so I, I don't mean to disparage any other board. I just don't want to be that other board, you know, I don't want to be here for four hours. We've had a lot of long meetings this week. I just don't want to be that other board, you know, I don't want to be here for four hours. We've had a lot of long meetings this week.
Oh, we are, we're, we're dealing with major things.
But we've dealt with major things before, you know, um. So it's, it's just a question of juggling, and again, I get back to, I just think we need to be fair and consistent.
And efficient.
And efficient.
Um, can I still propose it and we can vote on that?
We, the vote would happen at our next meeting, just as an information item.
Okay.
Um, the other things I think we should think about for that meeting, when we talk about this, there are only two other issues. One is, um, uh, what is the timeframe for completing a speaker card? Uh, I think the current rule of board clerk is that ten minutes before the meeting starts. What's the deadline?
Up until the meeting starts, I think it's.
Okay, so up until the meeting starts, so by, by the meeting starting. And that there should be no exceptions, because that then puts people in a difficult position. Who are we making exceptions for, who are we not? I think it should just be, by the time of the meeting on the agenda, you get your speaker card filled out.
Today, we clarified because we didn't want people to be confused with the closed session starting at five thirty. If you wanted to comment on the closed session, then you needed to have your card. Prior to five thirty, but if with the open session not starting until six thirty. If the, the comment was regarding one of those issues, they had until six thirty to submit the card.
That's great, because I felt bad at our last meeting when people came and, you know, got their card, and then were waiting for an hour and a half.
Generally, the, what we've done, um, is that if there's a closed session. If there's a closed session for a board meeting, we typically have two public hearing sessions. Because they could want to just comment on whatever the closed session, even though it's just a very brief description, there could be a comment there. And then we always have the comment time on the um, open, you know, agenda and during the open session. So that's why, unfortunately, last week with the celebrations, and we've already talked about how we could do that a little differently, although it was beautiful.
It was.
But you know, that was, that was the open session, so the open session started, we've done it before the open session at five. Even though the rest of the agenda, the business part, didn't happen until whatever time it was, six something or, you know, much later.
They'd still have to come at five and stay for an hour and a half.
Exactly. I mean.
There's any way to have two back-to-back meetings? I mean, it's not, they'd be two open sessions. That'd be kind of, I don't know, we'd have to ask counsel on that one.
And, you know, in the situation. Doesn't necessarily have to be a board meeting that we do that recognition.
Good point.
I mean, it's, it's lovely, but I mean, we can do it in a, in a bigger area, so they're not.
Yeah.
And it doesn't need to be at a board meeting.
True.
So that way, it's not, because you're right, this is supposed to be to conduct the, the district's business. And um, so I don't want to take away from the event, but what, it wouldn't be any different if the board was at.
Yeah, yeah.
The, you know, certificates and pictures.
Yeah, it would be great.
Part of the board meeting.
Because then people wouldn't have to sit for an hour and a half.
Exactly.
And then the only other thing we should think about?
The remote.
Yes, in-person or remote. Um, we need to look at that, and I would want to hear from um, our technical staff to find out what that would actually mean. It's where, right now, we don't do interactive, so we'd have to see how. So, could you maybe just have them prepare to inform us on what that would be?
Yes, because I couldn't answer that either, I was trying to.
No, uh-uh, I can't.
Logistically.
Yeah, right.
Wouldn't it work like it did when, yeah, um. You were doing it before, or not you, but I, I just mean general.
Um, the only thing there was, everybody was remote.
Right.
So we didn't have, and, and that's what I'm talking about, having in-person and remote, I just. The coordination of it, and when they click on and off, and that's the part I'm not. I don't, I don't, never even try to speak on behalf of technology, and what they would need to do, I would definitely need to ask.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Signal emergency, right?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Okay, good discussions.
So for clarification of what um, you want to bring back, because procedurally. You've discussed it, and I, I wrote things down, but what would happen procedurally is when we get to the point where you're comfortable with. Um, you know, after we talked to Mr. Fell and other things. We would bring to the board a revised board policy, so we have our current board policy. But we would bring a revised board policy that would incorporate these changes that are here. Um, that would then go for, like our others, would go for a first reading. And then at a second board meeting, it would be approved um, to proceed that way. So I just want to make sure I understand the board's expectation. Are you expecting us to have a revised board policy for first read at our next board meeting on May fifteenth? That's my question, and I'm looking at all of you, because I don't know, you know.
I think that's a big ask, I think that's.
I'm not sure we're there yet, because I don't, I don't know if we've reached consensus. But I think we did a great job today just identifying what they are, what our initial thoughts are.
The other thing I would encourage is um. With the current policy, because some of the things that were recommended and mentioned, we could do, it exists in the current policy, like the ability to extend time. Um, it just in what happened with Monday, I would make a suggestion that if, if nothing changed, current policy. And you had twenty people that all wanted to talk like we had. That before just giving one minute, we asked that, because there were a few that didn't talk.
Right.
So that would theoretically have given more time to divide up. You know, there were some placeholder ones and Jane Does and whatever, so when it came down to it, really then getting down to who's gonna talk. We what, and that way, people do get the maximum amount of time, given our current board policy. You know, before, and, and I say all this because we're still talking about taking like a month or something to actually make the change. So it's, you're a, a chronic in the process, but I just wanted to make sure I had clarity from the board on the expectations. And then also just share that it is something that would, you're looking at, you know, bringing to a future meeting, then bringing again for approval, and then the implementation.
Yeah, because we've, you've raised really good points, I mean, if we, if we had a situation like we did the other day, there were nineteen. The first step does need to be is, you know, maybe reading off the names, is everybody here, some people leave. And, or just somebody not qualified, because they don't have their name down here. And then we see how many we have, and then we could have in our board policy, in any instance where we have ten or more speakers. We automatically expand the time so that each person was given two minutes.
Okay.
With that, we're ready for item number four. Adjournment.
Are we sure? I raised this before, and I'm. So are we sure? Okay, we adjourned at eight thirty-two, thank you all.
Thank you.